No, we're ready.
You should be good to go.
Okay, Smithville Board of Alderman Works session is now called to order. This is a joint session with the EDC, so I'll turn it over to Bruce to call his meeting order.
My name's Bruce Kramer. I'm standing in for our Chair and I call our meeting order for the Smithville EDC.
Thank you, Bruce. All right, we have a pretty limited agenda tonight. For those of you who don't know, Megan Miller is on and so is Sid. Megan will be presenting. Sid is here for questions as well. And Megan, if you could just introduce what all you guys do for the city and I'll kick it off to you.
Hi, everybody. Like the mayor said, I am Megan Miller. Sid and I work for a law firm called Gilmore and Bell. We are Special Economic Development Council to the city as well as Bond Council to the city. Tonight, we're going to be going over a pretty lengthy PowerPoint that we call Economic Development 101. That's just going to give a pretty good overview of the different types of economic development incentives that the city can offer. If I'm going too fast, stop me. If you have any questions, stop me. We will have a question slide after every different type of incentive. So hopefully, we can catch any questions there. But if you need anything explained during the presentation, just go ahead and stop me. And I'll, we'll get your questions answered. So I'm going to share my screen and we'll start the presentation. All right. Let me. All right. So like I said, this is Economic Development 101. We're going to start with TIF. What is tax increment financing? Tax increment financing is a method of diverting taxes to pay for costs associated with building a project. These consist of pilots, which is payment in lieu of taxes. Generally, 100% of pilots are captured into the TIF. It also consists of economic activity taxes or ETS. Under the statute, 50% of ETS are captured. These consist of sales taxes generated within the project. These monies are deposited into a special allocation fund, which is a fund that's set up under the TIF contract is required statutorily, and these monies will flow into that fund. There is also the opportunity for surplus pilots or ETS, which is when a percentage of the captured pilots or ETS are returned back to the taxing jurisdictions. There's also capital contributions as well, which is similar to what this, we do with the school district. In the marketplace is where a percentage of those revenues are returned back to a single taxing jurisdiction. And then additionally, we have the ambulance and fire protection, which is entitled to reimbursement of at least 50%. This is since 2014, any voter approved tax increases that are not captured within a pre-existing redevelopment agreement without the taxing jurisdictions approval. So renewals of taxes are not subject to this. For, for sales taxes, the entire increase is returned to a taxing jurisdiction, but for property taxes, it's a little bit different. It's the difference between the new levy rate and also, and the maximum voter approved levy rate at the time.
Hey, Megan?
Yeah.
We're only seeing the first slide. Can you make sure the presentation runs on the
Oh. Are you seeing the? Oh. Oh, yeah, yeah.
You're on your own screen, I think.
That is, it is the wrong screen. I am so sorry. Let's see.
And Alyssa joined as well too. So Bruce, you're off the hook for a journey and if she sticks around.
Miss Rare, is that better? Can you see that?
Yes, that's better. Is that good? Yeah. Thank you.
All right. So like I said, we're talking about voter approved tax increases. Like I said, if, if a taxing jurisdiction were to approve a sales tax, that entire increase is, is kept back and returned to the taxing jurisdictions unless there is approval from that taxing jurisdiction for that increase to flow into the special allocation fund. If there's a property tax increase, it is a little bit different. It's the difference between the new levy rate and the maximum voter approved levy rate at the time of the adoption. Let's see. I don't know why this is not, there we go. So how is a TIF plan approved? Generally, a plan is prepared by the city or, or the developer and then is filed by the developer with the city clerk. There's that a request for bids and proposals that happens at the same time. Next is a mailed notice to taxing jurisdictions. There's also a publication that is done twice in a local newspaper. We then also mail notice to property owners. And then we hold a TIF commission hearing and the TIF commission hearing is a public hearing where the TIF commission makes a recommendation to the governing body as to whether or not the plan meets the statutory requirements and whether they think it's appropriate for the city to offer TIF. The governing body will then pass an ordinance approving the plan. And then either at the same time that they approve the plan or at subsequent meetings, the governing body can approve a redevelopment project to start the TIF clock. The county, the city has 10 years from the approval from the TIF plan to start the TIF clock for each individual project. And then once that clock is started, it runs for 23 years. If the TIF plan, like I said, sometimes it can, it could include multiple redevelopment projects and all of those can have different clocks started depending on when the ordinance is passed. The county is asked to certify the base property taxes or the base sales taxes. And we go from there. So we'll hear, we'll go to the next one. So we also have to designate a redevelopment area. That redevelopment area must contain property that's classified as a blighted area or a conservation area. And so a blighted area is an area by reason of predominance, unsanitary or unsafe condition, deterioration of site improvements, the existence of conditions which endanger life or property by fire or other causes or any combination of those factors and constitutes an economic or social liability or a menace to the public health, safety or welfare in its present condition and use. The legislature just this year, it went into effect on August 28th, removed defective or inadequate street layouts or improper subdivision or obsolete planning and constitutes a menace to public morals as a blighting factor. Now, a conservation area is a little bit different. It's any improved area within the boundaries of a redevelopment area located within the territorial limits of a municipality in which 50% or more of the structures in that area have an age of 35 years or more. It's not yet a blighted area, but it is detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare and may become a blighted area because of either one or more of the following factors, either dilapidation, obsolescence, deterioration, illegal use of individual structures, presence of structures below minimum code requirements, abandonment, excessive vacancies, overcrowding, a lack of ventilation. So it's a little bit easier of a standard to meet. And then also TIF as, actually as of this year, the legislature also changed this. TIF is prohibitive in all greenfield areas. So a greenfield area is any vacant, unimproved or agricultural property that is located wholly outside the incorporated limits of the city and is substantially surrounded by properties with zoned ag. It was originally just limited to certain areas of Missouri, but the legislature expanded that to everywhere. So what happens after a TIF plan is approved? So pilots and ETS are generated within the redevelopment project area. Those monies flow into a special allocation fund. And then it can either be a pay as you go or the developer can have bonds and the bonds would pay off. The debt service on the money in the special allocation fund would pay off the debt service on the bonds. So what happens after a TIF plan is approved? The city and the developer will execute a TIF contract. That special allocation fund will be created. The city will authorize debt if it's applicable for that particular project. The developer will build the project. The city imposes TIF by ordinance for each particular area. The city will collect the pilots and eats and then the city disperses the funds from a special allocation fund to repay the TIF bonds. Or if there aren't TIF bonds, then we'll repay the developer their reimbursable project costs. So in the case with the marketplace TIF, the city, it's, the pilots need to distribute in the special allocation fund and then Stephen distributes that money back out. Either it stays in the special allocation fund or it goes back out to the taxing jurisdictions. So what can TIF revenues pay for? This is what is allowed by statute. Some cities will limit these categories that can be reimbursed. You know, some cities will say you could only use public improvements. Others say we're not going to pay for land acquisition costs or any vertical construction. So, but as you can see, this is, you know, the comprehensive list, land acquisition costs, demolition and clearing of land, cost to rehabilitate existing buildings, costs to construct public improvements, cost to construct private improvements, studies, surveys, plans, and specs, professional service costs, financing costs, and then relocation costs for displaced persons and businesses. So this is just kind of a good visual of how this works. So this is an entire, would be an entire redevelopment area. And then within this area would be different project areas. And you'll see that depending on when they were started, this example has each one starting, you know, in subsequent years, then your 23-year clock starts from those years. So you have to, you have to approve a project within 10 years from when the plan was approved. And then each one of those has its own 23-year clock. So with a TIF, there is some ongoing compliance. There is an annual report that is sent to the Missouri Department of Economic Development. It includes an update on the redevelopment areas and the redevelopment project areas. It includes, you know, the amount of pilots that were generated. And then every five years, a five-year hearing is held on each redevelopment project area to determine if satisfactory progress is being made. And it's generally a PowerPoint presentation given to the city that meets that. So any questions about TIF?
Steve Langley says, I'm new to EDC, so excuse my ignorance, but has Smithville utilized TIFs? And is there a more recent one that people would be familiar with?
Yes. So Smithville has utilized TIF. The marketplace is the only TIF that's in the city of Smithville right now. It started in 2017 and then it's gone from there. And I don't know off the top of my head, but it's, it's done really well in terms of generating pilots and eats. It's, it's on track to, to produce what they projected based off of what's being, what has been built currently.
Megan, I disagree with that statement, but that's for a different time and place based on original estimates, but we can go.
Like, like I said, based on what was, what has been built.
As you go through these different programs, could you just kind of close it with, here's an example of how Smithfield's utilized this? That way I won't get on every
Oh, yeah, I know. Yeah, absolutely. Yes, the marketplace is the only TIF currently in, in, that's been approved within the city, the city limits. Any other questions? All right, we will move on to CID's. So what is a community improvement district? A community improvement district is a political subdivision with the power to impose a sales tax, a special assessment, or a real property tax to fund public improvements and services. It is created by a city or a county following the submission of a petition. As of August 28th of this year, CID will not exceed 27 years from the adoption of the ordinance. This is different because originally a CID could go on forever. So they are, the legislature has put a limit of 27 years on CID's. So how is the CID formed? A CID is formed by a petition being filed with, with the city clerk. A public hearing is held within 45 days of that petition. And then after the public hearing, the municipality may adopt an ordinance approving the petition and creating the CID. So the petition itself is signed by property owners collectively owning at least 50% of the assessed valuation of real property within the CID and more than 50% per capita of all owners of real property within the CID. The petition will include a five-year plan, the services improvements to be provided, an estimate of the costs, anticipating the sources of funds to pay for those costs and the anticipated terms of those sources. Also, the maximum rate of taxes and special assessment among a few other things. And the notice of the hearing is also published in the newspaper and it's mailed. So how is a CID governed? A CID is generally governed by five to 30 directors that are either elected or appointed as approved by the district. The qualifications are, they have to be at least 18 years old and an owner of real estate or a business operating in the CID or a registered voter residing in the CID and compliant with other qualifications that may be set out in the petition. Now, beginning this year, the legislature approved a change to this, that for CID's with no registered voters within the boundaries of the district, at least one director must reside within the city, be registered to vote and have no financial interest in any real property or business operating within the CID. It is not a relative within the second degree of consonant one D to an owner of real property or a business. So they have to be completely removed from the property or a business located within there. There is an ability, you can remove by cause by two-thirds director vote of the board of directors with notice of removal to the directors. A CID can be funded by multiple ways, special assessment, real property taxes, sales taxes, fees, rents, charges, grants, gifts or donations, or a CID can issue bonds. A sales tax is limited. It's maximum of 1%. There's no limit on the amount of property taxes and any bonds that are issued can be issued for no more than 20 years. And so this is where it gets a little lengthy. These are the, this, there's two slides. These are the financeable public services. The CID can fund, so they can prohibit or restrict traffic and vendors on streets with the municipality's consent. And it can be both vehicular and pedestrian. They can operate or contract for the provision of music, news, childcare, parking facilities, buses, other modes of transportation. They can leave space for sidewalk cafes, tables, security personnel, equipment or facilities for the protection of property and persons. They can also provide for cleaning, maintenance and other services, promote tourism, recreational cultural activities, promote business activity development retention, provide refuse collection and disposal services and contract for or conduct, conducting economic planning, marketing or other studies. And then these are the types of projects that are able to be funded with CID monies. So shopping malls, plazas, parks, lawns, trees, other landscaping, convention centers, arenas, aquariums, aviaries, meeting facilities, all manner of sidewalk streets, alleys, bridges, water, storm sewer systems, but those again have to be public. They can't be private. And then also parking lots, garages, other facilities, streetscape lighting benches, marquees, awnings, canopies, and then other necessary or useful or desired improvement that is public. And then if the CID were to be a blighted area, then they can pay for the demolition renovation and the rehabilitation of structures. Recently, the legislature did change the definition of blighted area to match the definition in the TIF Act. So there is an ability to add or remove property from a CID once it's been formed. The property may be added to a CID by ordinance after the board of directors of the CID consents. A petition is filed and a public hearing is held. Within that, the, the same petition requirements to start a CID are required for the addition of property, but only as it relates to the new area being added. It doesn't have to be the entire CID itself. Then property can be removed from a CID by ordinance after the following. There's a written request from property owner. The board of directors agrees, a public hearing is held and then the CID is able to meet their obligation without the revenues generated from that property. There's also ongoing compliance required of a CID. An annual budget must be submitted to the governing body of the city. A CID must adopt the budget prior to the first day of the fiscal year. An annual report is filed, is submitted to the clerk and the Missouri Department of Economic Development within 120 days. That report includes the services that were provided, the revenues that were collected and any expenditures that the CID made within that year, including copies of any resolution that was passed as well. And then also there's an annual audit within six months after the end of the fiscal year, a CID must submit an audit of their financials to the state auditor. So there is a CID in Smithville as well over the marketplace with a TIF. There's also a CID. So a lot of these, you'll see, these economic development centers can be layered, a CID on top of a TIF. And then occasionally there'll also be a TDD, which we'll talk about here in a minute, actually. So are there any questions about community improvement districts? All right, we will move on.
A quick question, Megan?
Yeah.
Does Smithville have a blighted area?
Yes. The marketplace was, that was a blighted, as it was a blighted area that was approved whenever they approved the TIF plan, that was approved as a blighted area. And then otherwise, that would be up to the Board of Aldermen if there, if another TIF was to come to see if you guys would think that whatever, you know, new TIF may come up or a CID that's asking for a blight designation or a chapter 353, if it meets the statutory definition of blight.
But other than marketplace, we don't have any area designated now as a blighted area?
No, no. And generally, that only comes, the, the ask to be designated as a blighted area will only come after, you know, somebody's requesting an incentive where that designation is required.
Right. So, yeah, we currently don't have any, but we are, we do have developers discussing some with us currently.
So what are transportation development districts? A TDD is a political subdivision created to fund, promote, plan, design, construct, improve, maintain and operate one or more transportation related projects. And this, this is kind of an interesting thing about a TDD. The projects don't have to be within the boundaries of a TDD. It has to just benefit the TDD. So what are TDD projects? So you, you can see there, they're all transportation related. They're all listed here. I've done a couple of TDD's for streets, interchanges. I've not seen one. I don't know Sid, if you've ever seen one for any of these other things, but we see them primarily for, a lot for interchanges and streets and bridges.
We've seen them used for parking garages too.
Oh, yep, that's, yep. So a CID may be created by at least 50 registered voters within the proposed TDD or if there are no registered voters, the owners of all real property located within the proposed TDD or the governing body of any local transportation authority. And a local transportation authority is a municipality, county highway commission, special road district, any local public authority or political subdivision that has jurisdiction over a bridge, street, highway, railroad, et cetera. And that, so moving on, so to number four, or two or more local transportation authorities may adopt resolutions calling for the joint establishment and file a petition or at least 50 registered voters for two or more counties. So one, two, and three are considered a standard petition and then four and five are considered a joint petition. So for, to, once we have the petition by any one of those manner of ways, the petition is filed in the circuit court of the county in which the majority of the TDD is located. The court will hold the hearing. They will determine if it is not legally defective and the proposed TDD and method of funding is not illegal or unconstitutional. If the petition was filed by registered voters or by a governing body, the court will certify the questions regarding TDD, TDD creation, project development and proposed funding for voter approval. If the petition was filed by owners of record of all the real property, the court declares the TDD organized and then certifies the funding method stated in the petition. And then if the petition is filed pursuant to the resolutions of two or more local transportation authorities, the court verifies a single question regarding TDD creation, project development and proposed method of funding for voter approval. So if voter approval is requested, the election is held and a majority voter, vote is required to approve the formation. So how is a TDD governed? It is governed by a board of directors. If it is formed by two or more local transportation authorities, the board consists of the presiding officer and one person chosen by the governing body of the local transportation authority or the presiding officer of each local transportation authority, which would be the mayor in this case. If not formed by two or more local transportation authorities, directors are chosen by qualified voters within the TDD, which would be either the registered voters or the property owners. The funding sources, similar to a CID, it's sales tax, special assessment, real property taxes, tolls or bonds. Here, again, the sales tax is limited to 1%. It must be approved by qualified voters, which are either the registered voters within the TDD or the property owners, which if it's a property owner, they receive one vote per acre of ownership. Real property taxes need four-sevenths of voters, not to exceed the annual rate of 10 cents for $100 of assessed valuation. And then with TDD's, the bonds are not to exceed 40 years. So with a TDD, there's also ongoing compliance. A state auditor is required to audit each TDD at least once every three years. And then there's also an annual report. And there are no current TDD's in the city of Smithville. They're a little bit more complicated to form just solely because there's a, you know, you file it with the court. There's a, there's a couple more hangups that surround the formation of a TDD than with other economic development incentives. Are there any questions about TDD's?
And currently the court is not being held, so it'd be really hard right now.
It'd be really hard. Yeah, it'd be really, really hard. They're also really hard to terminate. I'm in the process of terminating one right now and they're, they're very hard to terminate as well. All right. If not, we'll move on to chapter 353. So chapter 353 is tax abatement that's available within a blighted area. So once again, this, the blighted area definition, the legislature has made it the same as the one in the TIF Act. So across all of our economic development incentives now where chapter 353 had a very different definition of blight. It now matches the TIF Act, so it makes it a little bit easier to remember. Within a chapter 353 tax payment, you have to create an urban redevelopment corporation. And so once that is created, it has the power to operate a redevelopment project pursuant to a city approved plan. So within a chapter 353, tax abatement can be provided for up to 25 years. For the first 10 years, it's up to 100% of the incremental increase in real property taxes on the land and up to 100% of the real property taxes on all improvements. And then for the next 15 years, it's between 50 and 100% of the property taxes on all land and improvements. So the owner will continue to pay base taxes on the land in the year that it was the year before the redevelopment corporation took title. And then the owner pays a pilot for the base property taxes for the first 10 years and then can also pay a pilot for the next 15 years as well. And then in this one, similar to with a TIF, an ambulance or a fire protection district is able to be reimbursed from between 50 and 100% of their, their tax. And this one, we've seen, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be 100% in the first 10 years. We've seen it in any, any manner of percentage of tax abatement. We've seen it, um, any, any manner of percentage of tax abatement. So to form a, to create, to have a chapter three fifty-three, uh, you form an urban redevelopment corporation. You draft a development plan, you hold a public hearing, the city will enact the ordinance that approves the plan, provides for the tax abatement, makes the blight finding. And then the company transfers title to the redevelopment of corporate, redevelopment corporation that triggers the abatement. And then there's an immediate title transfer back to the company. Um, chapter three fifty-three also gives the city the statutory authority to acquire property through eminent domain, and then the city can then sell the property. Um, if the city wants to use eminent domain, the proceedings begin first, the city starts that process and then it will enact a master plan via ordinance. Um, that the, that area is a redevelopment area. So any questions about chapter three fifty-three? There aren't currently any chapter three fifty-threes in the city of Smithville.
Um, I have a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I know you said there weren't any TDDs or three fifty-threes in Smithville. Can you give us any examples of any like Kansas City area, just so we can kind of relate them mentally?
Yes, oh yeah, um, so a, a TDD, um, actually the, the project. I'm trying to think, when you're going to Harrisonville, this is kind of outside the metro area, but this is one that I work on. Um, there's an interchange in Harrisonville that's right by the, the Ford dealership, there's a new bridge and it's a whole new interchange. That's a TD, that was funded by a TDD, actually a very successful TDD that's still ongoing. Um, they generate a sales tax, um, and they built that interchange there. Um.
One, the TDD in, in Platte County for, um, Zona Rosa.
Oh, that's right, yep, there's a TDD in Platte County for that. That one's still ongoing too, I don't think that one's terminated yet either. Um, chapter three fifty-three, a good example of chapter three fifty-three, um, is the city of. Blue Springs has a master three fifty-three, um, over their downtown area. Um, where the redevelopment corporation provides tax abatement to, um, businesses that come in. Um, and there's this kind of interesting, um, they provide it based on how much money you're going to put into your business and then you get a certain level of tax abatement. It's worked really well there for them. Um, I'm trying to think of another three fifty-three. Sid, do you have another example of three fifty-three you've done?
Um, Belton is doing the same thing of what Blue Springs did.
Oh, really?
And they're doing something in their downtown area to, um, encourage or incentivize. Uh, redevelopment or improvements to the, uh, buildings, both residential and commercial in their, their downtown area.
I actually just did a three fifty-three in the city of Lebanon, um, where they're doing it for residential, um, a residential subdivision as well. Um, where they took blighted property and, and the, the new property owners of the houses get the tax abatement.
Yeah, and, and Alicia, I know you've lived in Kansas City area as long as I have. Um, if you look at Belton's development over the last twenty years, I think my friend that's on the council there said they probably have seventeen tax incentive districts there. Of different flavors and things going on, so.
Yeah, that's a really-
Pretty good example to look at, all these different things that have been done.
That's a really good example, actually, um, in Belton, it's called Y-Belt and it's where the, the sporting goods store is, I can't remember what it's called, right there on the corner.
Academy.
Academy Sports, yep, yep, so that's actually an example of a, a TIF that had multiple redevelopment project areas, they did that in phases, I think. At least three that I know of, maybe four, um, but that's an example of a TIF that's done, that's done pretty well. Um, and then also, um, Adams Dairy Parkway, um, in Blue Springs, that actually was a combination of a TIF, a, a CID and three TDDs. They, that was all done, um, with multiple, um, eh, economic development incentives and it's done really well. And that actually, we're getting ready to terminate, um, uh, those TDDs down there, their, um, sales tax ended and the project's been built and so they're getting ready to terminate all those things.
Yeah, I remember when that started, so they're, I mean.
That's a very successful one.
Yep.
Alicia, someone's got one for Summit Woods and Summit Fair, that's there at, uh, four seventy and three fifty highway.
Yep.
Paragon Star, the new stalker complex, it's gonna go in in Lee Summit, it's also a TDD, CID and TIF. So then moving on, what, sorry, what are you saying, Ms. Mar?
I say, go ahead.
Uh, so the next is, uh, chapter one hundred financing, which we just actually recently talked about. Um, so what is chapter one hundred tax abatement? Uh, this is where a city, um, will issue bonds, uh, to finance the costs of warehouses, distribution facilities, research and development facilities, office industries. Agricultural processing industries, service facilities, industrial plants and commercial facilities. Um, we've also determined, our firm has done some research, that commercial facilities can also, um, mean, um, apartment complexes. So under chapter one hundred, um, there's a real property tax payment component from zero to a hundred percent that they can do. Um, a personal property tax payment, again, between zero and a hundred percent. Uh, there's a sales tax exemption on construction materials that the city can provide. Um, then also a sales tax exemption on equipment machinery, um, if the ED approves of that. Um, we've seen, um, chapter one hundreds are very common throughout the Kansas City area, we see them everywhere. Um, we've seen a lot lately, um, particularly in industrial areas where, um, a chapter one hundred is just done during the construction period for two to three years. For the sales tax exemption on construction materials, and then once it's built, it, uh, gets terminated. So a, um, chapter one hundred, um, there's a plan and a cost benefit analysis that is created and then sent to all the taxing jurisdictions. Um, we will then negotiate bond documents and the read of, or the development or performance agreement, and then the city will hold a public hearing. Um, and pass an ordinance approving the chapter one hundred plan and authorizing the issuance of bonds. Uh, so the lease payments are in accordance, eh, with, under the lease, uh, equal the debt service payments on the bond, so that it's not really bonds that are being issued. Um, the city is not obligated to pay those in any way. Um, but what's triggering the abatement is that the city is holding title to those properties, uh, during the length of the transaction. So that this, the company can take advantage of the tax exempt status of the city. Um, and then for the, the sales tax exemption on construction materials, the city will issue a certificate and they will use that. So then how it works is, um, land is owned by a company, it's then transferred to the city, uh, removing it from the tax rolls. Um, the bonds are issued in an amount equal to the total value of the project. The city leases the land and the project back to the company. And then the city and the company agree to a schedule of pilots to set the abatement level. Um, so they can be issued for any commercial projects payable from the lease revenues and the city's full faith and credit is not backing the bonds at all. So do we have any questions about chapter one hundred?
And no chapter one hundreds in Smithville, the only thing that you have is a, a tip and a CID that we've already covered.
Yes, correct. All right, um, next is, uh, neighborhood improvement districts. Um, so a NID is an area that is benefited by public improvements and assessed to pay for that improvement. So it's created either by an election or by a petition of property owners. So to create a NID, um, either, uh, city may by resolution submit a question of NID creation to qualified voters residing within the NID. At a general or a special election, or a petition, which, um, is signed by the owners of record of at least two-thirds of all real property located within the NID. And then that's submitted to the governing body of the, the municipality. So then the remaining formation steps of a NID are, um, they, they prepare plans and specs. Um, there's a preparation of, uh, preliminary assessment rule, which is in, in order that assessments to be made against each parcel that is benefited. Um, you hold a public hearing, the governing body orders the improvements to be made. Um, the project is construction, constructed, um, there's, um, the final costs and assessments are computed and then. Um, the assessment of final costs and notice of such to the property owners. So the property owners, when it, can either pay in full upfront for their entire portion of the project, or it could be an annual installment over the course of the bonds. So, um, the city may issue bonds to pay for all or part of the project costs. Uh, the principal and interest on the bonds are paid for through the special assessments that are create, uh, collected. Uh, the bonds are general obligation bonds and count towards, uh, the issuer's legal debt limit, uh, but they're limited to twenty years. And we see this, there's not, um, there isn't a NID currently in the city of Smithville, but, um, we do these a lot. Um, in, actually, I've, I've done quite a few in rural areas where there's a gravel road and they want to pave it. Um, and so, um, it's like a, a small subdivision of, you know, fifteen to twenty houses. Will come together, sign a petition, they'll pave their stretch of road that all their houses are on. Um, and then, um, pay for that, they'll, the assessment comes, goes against their property. I don't see, we don't see a lot of people pay upfront because it's, you know, usually a, a pretty big number, but they pay in, you know, annual installments over twenty years. So there any questions about NIDS? All right, so, um, finally, um, there are reimbursement agreements. Um, so a municipality will enter an agreement with a property owner. Um, the property owner funds the costs of public improvements. Uh, the municipality will reimburse the owner for the cost of those improvements from the incremental sales or property tax generated from that project. Uh, that obligation is from year to year and subject to annual appropriation. Um, other municipal funds are, are not used nor revenues from other taxing jurisdictions, it's solely the incremental sales or property taxes that are generated. That was a pretty quick one, so, um, any further questions about any of the incentives that we talked about?
Megan, I, I appreciate you, um, going through this, I think that as we look to future growth, it's important to understand that, um, these programs. Are incentives for developers and as we, uh, grow our community, um, you know, it's just a great thing. I know there's pluses and minuses to all of them and at the end of the day, um, you know, we have to make sure that it is the best thing, but, uh, can you talk just briefly? Um, about some recent successes for communities? Um, you don't have to drill down by any means, but just some successes for using these incentives?
Yeah, um, I, actually, I really, uh, for chapter one hundred purposes, um, Riverside's industrial area, that huge industrial area within the Levy District, that's. Uh, done with a lot of chapter one hundred bonds. Um, for each new building that's been built, they've issued chapter one hundred bonds generally just for the construction material, the. Sales tax exemption on construction materials portion, uh, but that's a, a really good example. Um. Um, like Sid was saying, Adams Dairy Parkway, I mean, that wasn't super recent, but I mean, that, that is a very successful. Um, use of multiple tax incentives, it's just done really well. Um, same with Sid was saying in Lee Summit, um, Summit Fair and Summit Woods were both, were both, um, CIDs and TIFs. Um, that have done, that have done exceptionally well. Um, and then like, I just, the example too of, um, Blue Springs and their downtown chapter three fifty-three, they continue to have businesses come in and utilize that throughout the years. So do you have another example?
The other one, uh, might be, um, easy for people to identify and recognize, uh, would be. Um, a lot of the development has occurred in Liberty along, um, one fifty-two. It's, um, comes there at the intersection of thirty-five, so there's, uh, there's some TIF and some other, uh, I can't remember. I think it was a CID was also involved in those. Um, but that's a, another major success story.
And then I, I think for going forward, and I know Anna and Cynthia have, have touched on this, but. Um, I think what the city needs to start thinking about is, you know, what projects make sense for these types of incentives? You know, um, what level of abatement, what internal rate of return for companies is the city comfortable with? You know, currently, um, I know Anna sent around the city's economic development guide, but that's really more of a, a toolbox guide. Um, do we want us to have a comprehensive economic development policy that kind of sets these things out? This is, you know, this is what we're looking for, this is the type of abatement we're comfortable with for this size project. Um, if you, um, you have to offer public improvements with this type of project, you know. Obviously subject to the city's discretion and, you know, they can make, you know, changes based on, you know, what's being offered. Um, but, you know, they can also put in, you know, restrictions and agreements, I mean, job creation, maximum reimbursement caps. Um, limits on the type of businesses that can be used, they have to be sales tax generating. Um, you, we don't do relocation of businesses within the community, they have to be all new businesses coming in. Um, all of those things can be kind of drilled down, um, in a comprehensive policy. So that's, I think, something the city probably needs to start thinking about, given the, the level of interest that developers have had in, in coming in and, and building within Smithville.
One of the items in the EDC strategic plan was a hotel conference complex. So for, to bring one of those type of complexes into the city, would we use one or more of these programs to do that or not necessary?
So that's, so that's a good, Megan, I'll take that, so, so it's a good, it's a great question. And having talked to a lot of hotel developers and worked, worked in that industry in the past. Right now, a hotel's not gonna build one without some kind of incentive, because people aren't traveling and staying in hotels like they used to, but it's also. We're close to a lot of hotels at the airport. So if you think about it from a financial standpoint of the business being the hotel, what is their incentive to build in? Smithville versus right over the border in Kansas City, you gotta remember, one hundred and thirty-second street is the border of, and that is Kansas City proper. Um, or in the county, or we're not very wide, we're pretty long, but there's not a lot of places that we're, we're not gonna build a hotel in the north end. So if that is something that's in the EDC strategic plan, then yeah, that's the discussion you're gonna have to have is what level of incentive are you open to for a hotel? Uh, also on top of that, we're not, we don't have enough beds to have a, uh, hotel motel sales tax currently. Which is also a benefit to a hotel, but they'll throw that one out the window and say it's not, but it does allow them to have a overall. Lower room rate than the airport, because they're not charging that thirteen percent tax.
Thanks for that, kind of a follow-on question, then the Herzog Foundation and, uh. I don't know if I've got the name right, the development over there on Commercial, I think it's called Eagle Creek. City didn't have to engage one of these programs to provide an incentive for them?
Well, Herzog Foundation is a non-for-profit organization, they don't have to pay taxes anyway.
Okay. Well, they do and they don't, they, they pay payroll tax, they just don't pay property tax.
Right, I mean, most of these tax abatements are, you know, surrounding abatement of real property taxes, so that it wouldn't really benefit them.
Yeah, the city doesn't collect, the city doesn't collect, uh, tax.
Yeah, that's right, so what about, what about over on Commercial then? That Eagle Creek, whatever that development is?
The housing development?
Yes.
We, we don't do incentives on residential.
Okay, and there, I'm gonna get into the rumor stage here, but. Kozak's was at one time pre-COVID, thinking about moving to a different location, is that something we would work with a current business that's wanting to expand? Into a new location?
So Kozak's site plan is approved, that's not a rumor, that's part of planning and zoning. Uh, and it's been approved by the Board of Aldermen. Um, they haven't approached us formally with any kind of development agreement, but that's what this meeting is for, so when someone like a Kozak's or anyone else wanting to develop. Would have, the staff would have guidelines, so they could say, yeah, we'll take this to board, or no, it doesn't meet, you know, what the board has already. Kind of agreed to as our policy, or once we formalize a policy, uh, or else we'll just bring every single shot in the dark at some sort of incentive to the board.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Damon.
Yep.
Eric, I just, to kind of piggyback off of Steve, and that's his wheelhouse in that area of financial world, so I won't. Be able to dive in as deep as he would, but it's important to understand that any of these programs. Um, in Herzog, yes, they're a non-for-profit, but guess what, they're eating here, they're meeting here. There're gonna be people traveling here that we're gonna have to find rooms for. Um, I mean, the list goes on, and I'm not just talking about Herzog, I'm talking about anybody that comes into work and, and I think the, the. Board is very aware of this and I, I, I'm positive the EDC knows this, but. We, we gotta think about it, I mean, these incentive programs are awesome, but we gotta think about the economic impact of all this down the road. Uh, it's tremendous.
And, and his question was directly towards if they had to have an incentive to build that building, that. We, 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 they could have asked for a tip, but they don't need one, because they're already not paying property tax, right? We, if you're, a waste of a lot of people's time on this call, that, if they would have asked for a tip and they're already non-for-profit, so. So let me kind of go around the room and, and, and see kind of what y'all are thinking. So Bruce, you've been kind of quiet, what's your, what's your take on this?
Good, like it, excellent.
Is there any incentives that were presented that you would be solidly against?
No.
Okay. Alderman Chevler.
I don't have any, any suggestions right now, I kind of want to hear what the EDC thinks.
Okay, all right, Ms. Naff. Alicia, you there? All right, last chance, I'll move on to Callie.
Oh, hold on, can you hear me?
Yes, Alicia came back.
Okay, um, no, I think everything sounded good, I don't really have any, anything to add to.
Okay, thank you. Alicia, you back now with this?
Yeah, the good old internet here in the old part of Smithville kicked me out.
What comments do you have or direction do you have for the board on what you would support or be adamantly against, or?
For any of these things?
Yeah, any kind of incentive package or policy that we'd want to put together to, to have staff start putting together?
Oh, I wouldn't be against any of it, I'd be willing to entertain anything that is brought to us. I don't, I don't see why we would immediately be against anything.
Ms. Noker, you're up.
Why did I know I was going to be next? I would just say that we need to make sure that the lines of communication are open and conversations are, are open. You know, before we entertain anything going forward. I know there are some areas, and as we were, you know, she was going through it, albeit very fast, I was trying to keep up, and it's a lot for me to, I, I was trying to keep it all together, but I, I'm sure I have just a very fine grasp of, of everything. But some areas that I know that could benefit, and I had some ideas in my head. And kind of wondering if there are some conversations that are being had that maybe are, you know, prompting the conversations. Which I think is great, obviously, we're, we're thinking forward and we're thinking of, of development. And I would just say we need to make sure we're having conversations with everyone involved and how that, how these things affect us. You know, going forward.
Yeah, I actually brought this to our joint school board Alderman meeting about a year ago, maybe a little further, longer ago. To kind of get their gauge their response on, you know, what they would look at to for a policy. Because it is, it, it did come out of the comp plan, it's part of the EDC's play, uh, action items from the comp plan now to say, where do we stand on incentives? And of course, we do have developers looking, but we've always had developers looking, and in the past, it's kind of been a shut door. So we need to kind of get something in, in writing and adopted by our board, like we've done with the comp plan and the strategic plan and our Parks and Rec master plan, water plan, sewer plan. We need to make sure we have that stuff in writing, so we don't waste developers' time and, and they don't waste our time, right? If they can go online, grab a document, write their proposal to that document, it makes it much more beneficial and direct document, not just somebody throwing noodles against the wall. See what sticks. All right, uh, Tara, I know you're new, but, uh, fire away. You're on mute. Nice fish. You're still on mute, that's okay.
Oh, sorry, I'm just trying to absorb everything and I, you know, have tons of questions. So I don't know, it's just, it's all new to me right now.
Thank you.
I would like to know about the marketplace, though. Because they said that is the only TIF and CID that we have currently. How has that come? And, you know, what, what are the next steps for the marketplace?
Uh, we started the clock in seventeen, right, Megan?
In October of seventeen.
So their five-year will be twenty-three?
Five-year, yeah, yep, starting into the twenty-three, the end of twenty-two will start the fifth year, it's next year.
Yeah, and a, as Megan stated, the performance of the built businesses are on track. We can't drill into those numbers because there's not enough built businesses, correct? We need at least a couple more operating.
Right, and then also at the start of the TIF plan, it was contemplated that the Heritage Tractor would be within the boundaries of the TIF, which it's obviously not, and it's not included in the TIF. So those projections that were originally written into the TIF plan included projections from the tractor store that, I, I mean, like I said, are not included, obviously, since it was built outside the TIF. That actually moves us into the, the next conversation that I actually wanted to bring up regarding marketplace. But, so the, yes, just the quick overview of the marketplace, it started in twenty seventeen. It's built out almost to, you know, what was projected in the plan, like I said, obviously, the tractor store wasn't in there. The lumber store is bigger than they expected when they originally contemplated the plan. But, yeah, there's quite a few things still in the works that are coming down the pipe that will generate additional pilots and eats. So actually, the developer has approached us to issue bonds on the marketplace. So that slide that I originally showed that the special allocation fund, the pilots and eats loaned to a special allocation fund, which then can either pay on a pay-as-you-go basis or debt service on bonds. So it's common for projects to start off as pay-as-you-go until the project is built out to support the sale of bonds. So with the development nearing completion of marketplace, they're asking for reimbursement. We currently, I did just receive their application for reimbursable project costs that we attach to the TIF plan, whenever they want to get paid for something through either their CID funds or the special allocation fund, they have to make some sort of reimbursement request. But when they issue bonds, instead of paying that over the course of time, you issue bonds, they get this money back quicker. And so they can move on to their next project. So like I said, instead of paying for reimbursable project costs as they come, the monies in special allocation fund go towards that debt service. So underneath the TIF contract, so going back to what we did with TIF, the city and the developer enter into a TIF contract. In that TIF contract for marketplace TIF, the city in their sole discretion will act in good faith if the issuer wants to issue bonds, but it is within the city's sole discretion is if bonds are being issued. If the city does decide to issue bonds, they're not general obligations of the city. They're revenue bonds that are tied to the revenues generated within the TIF, that special allocation fund, the pilots and the eats that are generated. The city does issue the bonds. But there are ways that the city, that we can negotiate to make sure that the debt service is covered if the TIF didn't generate the amount of money that they needed. So you could have reserve fund and then additional backup is a business interruption fund. You can negotiate into the city's general fund, obviously, is not on the line to pay any, any, any bond debt service. So currently, under the TIF contract, the city is obligated to reimburse the developer for allowable project costs plus the interest accrued on those approved project costs. So the interest rate that was agreed upon in the TIF contract is equal to prime rate, as reported by the Wall Street Journal, plus one percent, up to a maximum of six percent. So currently, that prime rate plus one percent would be about four point two five percent. That's what the inter, interest would generate. Obviously, we would not recommend doing a bond issuance if the cost of doing the bond issue was not lower than what is contractually obligated under the TIF contract. There would be no deal unless there's cost savings to the city. And obviously, if, you know, the underwriter has verbally told us that right now, interest rates are somewhere in the low threes. And so this could translate, obviously, into cost savings for the city and a shorter life for the TIF. So if issued, the agreements made to pay the capital contributions to the school district, to the fire district, the ambulance, also the administrative costs that are incurred, those would still be honored and paid. The bond issuance would still be subject to the maximum cap that was agreed upon in the TIF contract. Yeah, actually, so that, that's, that's about it, if anybody has any questions or thoughts on, on that.
So I know that kind of went off of Tara's question, but I still need to get to Robert before I go to our board too, and we've only got twenty-eight minutes left. So appreciate the extra info, we'll come back to that just after Robert. So Robert, what's your comments or concerns on the incentives that are presented?
Yeah, the governing body for the district is the Board of Education, so I don't want to speak on behalf of the Board of Education because they are, you know, the leaders of our district. But being the financial person for the districts, I can say that every project's standing on its own. And so, you know, what Megan gave was a general overview of different, you know, triggers that you can use to fund different projects. And so like, for example, for the, the marketplace that we mentioned, you know, there is a sixty percent tax abatement. And so that could be negotiated at different levels, that could be negotiated at twenty percent abatement or a hundred percent abatement. And so each project's standing on its own, she talked about the term blighted. You know, that marketplace area was really just a bunch of trees and land. So first you're like, well, how could that area be blighted, it's just bare land? Well, there was a ton of rock on that land, and to get utilities back in there, there's going to have to be a major investment for a developer to get back there and basically bring utilities to that area. And so that's why that was considered blighted. So that's up to the, you know, TIF commission and that, and that TIF board, what is considered blighted and, and that terminology. But every project's standing on its own, and, you know, the district isn't against all TIFs. You know, I think Dr. Schutz has been on and, and said that, you know, the downtown old hospital is, is probably the poster child for needing a TIF. It's just at what level, you know, this TIF can be up for twenty-three years, is it twenty-three years, is it fifteen years? Is it twenty percent abatement, is it eighty percent abatement? I mean, it all, all depends on the project and what the performer looks like and how those, those come out. So that's kind of my, I guess, my general statement on, you know, TIFs and how that works for the city and the district and how we work together.
Okay, and, and also for everyone on the, for everyone on the, the call, you know, the city of Smithville is sixteen square miles, the school district's about a hundred square miles. So there's going to be incentives outside of our city that they have to deal with with Kansas City and others as well. So you may hear of a project that the school board's dealing with that we won't be dealing with at all, like the data center that's a pretty large project. And I like to see the dollar amount, not just the percentages, because, you know, sometimes you talk eighty percent, that might be five grand, and we talk twenty percent, which might be five hundred million dollars. So there's, there's big differences there in percentages versus dollar amount. So I'll kick it off through our board now for comments. Alderman, Dan, what's your thoughts?
It'd be interesting to see what, uh, new plans would come together, be it a CID or, or something like that. I can't see necessarily some of the other ones, the neighborhood improvement. I've never seen one of those come into play, but it'd be interesting to see what comes forth over the next five to ten years in regards to those type of programs being used for new projects and upgrading our, our current areas.
I, I know one person on this call who's asked me about a, did a few times, Mr. Kramer has a property that does not have sewer in it. And getting his property neighbors together to work on something like that, it might be something in the future. So that's definitely one, that's definitely one we might look at for sure, Dan. Anything that you, any limits that you want, that you can have off the top of your head that you would want staff to look at in some sort of draft policy? Anything you're adamantly against?
Well, I would be, I would say, uh, the higher percentages. That's, that, that could be considered a problem in my eyes, taking too long to pay things back. The obvious answers. Hopefully, we would be able to negotiate strongly to make sure that these are, these can work out in our favor.
Yeah. Alderman Sarver, I know you were part of the, were part of the board when we did the marketplace, you were part of the TIF commission, what comments do you have?
Not against any of the proposals that they put out there, I think we got, look at each of them on, on their own merit. Anything they want to bring forward, I think we should consider and, you know, make, like I say, a moment's a good situation for the city, just, you know, negotiate a good situation, I think any of them could work.
Yeah, okay. Alderman Kibelski?
I, I'm all for anything that is brought to us. I just think we'd have to negotiate, you know, and put the city as the, or the, you know, put the city first, make sure our citizens, everything they're taken care of. I don't know, I just, a lot of information, a lot of overlooked, lots of questions I have written down.
Yeah. What are some of those questions, or do you just want to throw those to Cynthia and Anna?
Yeah, that'll be, there's a lot. It was a lot of, it was a lot of great information. Yes, I was very impressed with the presentation.
Megan, are you going to email that? Are you going to email that out to everyone?
Oh, yeah, we can, we can, yeah.
Alderman Chevler?
You know, I, I'm, I'm really, I, I'm really down for, to look at anything, right? I mean, I want to see any opportunities, whatever, anyone that wants to develop can, can present to us. So, you know, I, I don't want to, I don't want to shift in one way or another, I just, I, I just want to see opportunities, so.
Alderman Atkins?
I was actually amazed at that, that many incentive programs that were available out there. And personally, I like to see that available for anybody who wants to grow in Smithville. And of course, like has already been stated by other Aldermen and board members is each one has its own merit and needs to be adjusted at that time.
Thank you. Alderman Hartman, I know you've made a few comments, but any direction towards staff looking for drafting a policy?
Oh, Mayor, I, I think the, the board is, is there, I mean, to, and open to looking at those incentives. It's in my DNA is development, growth, business. That's why I'm here, I love the city, and I think that all these programs could be perfect for any developer that approaches the city. I just think we have to be open, open to it for sure.
So did I miss anyone, sorry, if I did, it's kind of hard to, I got twenty-four participants. So, so Ms. Wagner, I don't know who else we need to direct this to, but I, I think you have the direction that we want a policy, so we answered that question. You know, I, I think if we can pull something together based off of what Megan and Sid have worked on in other cities, it's kind of a draft policy and we can redline it as we need to. Does that work for you and Anna and Megan and Sid?
I think that's absolutely something that we can do, and I'm seeing nods and heads around, around the block here. And in addition to Alderman Kibelski, if there are others who have questions, if you want to email those to Anna and I, we can incorporate those in and, and, and have that information. And my thought is kind of next steps here would be working with Sid and Megan and coming up, just like the mayor said, with taking some other policies and bring something forward and probably bring it to the EDC first for some discussion input, even in light of some of the questions posed by people and, and kind of workshop it through that to bring back to the board if that would be an agreeable process.
Yeah, I'd like to do that, then I would like to make it part of our joint board meeting with the school district to kind of go through and redline that. And I'll And, uh, I'll say this at that meeting as well, once we agree to a policy, we need to stick to our policy and not walk out of the room and say you don't agree with the policy, this is your opportunity to publicly state concerns and comments and, and help draft this policy. Um, don't walk out of the room and say, I hate incentives and we shouldn't be doing anything, so um, I'll say that at that meeting once we have it, but for this board and this committee as well. Um, the reason we're having this joint meeting is so everyone can be heard and say their comments and concerns, and we don't get into another situation like we've had uh, a couple of years ago with the marketplace, and there's only one person, I think, on this call that was even really part of that vote. Uh, staff wasn't here, I wasn't part of the board, most of our elected officials weren't, so, uh, continuing to uh, take shots at that, uh, at people on this board for that decision, it's not really appropriate, and uh, we all inherited it and we're going to work through it.
And Mayor, if, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I was going to say, if we could have a bit of discussion, I know it's, it was kind of overwhelming and a lot to think about with regard to the requests from the marketplace. Um, but that is a relatively new request, and if we could get a feel from the Board of Aldermen as to direction that we could provide to Megan and Sid, that would be helpful.
Uh, I think we, uh, can go over that, once we get to that business number, um, it can definitely be a topic for our board retreat. To go into a little more in, in depth on that, but we have, we're wrapping up budget and a lot of other stuff for the next two months. So to throw together a presentation on that right now, I don't think is um, going to happen timely, so I think, uh, I, I know we, we need to wait till we get some more businesses in there, but I know, uh, like Tara, what else would you want to know about the, the marketplace?
Well, Mayor, if I can clarify also, and I'm sorry, Tara, we can, we can get lots of information about that. I think the specific question I was asking about is the issues of bonds and their request, um, for that, which is more timely than our retreat.
Gotcha, um, and it makes financial sense, we need to look at it. Anyone else disagree with that?
Not at all, Mayor, I, I agree with that, you, you, you got to do what's best, it makes sense for us as a city, so I, I think that's the direction Cynthia is looking for from us.
Alderman Sarver?
Is, is this a question of whether or not we want to issue bonds?
If, if we want, if we want them to present to us what that would look like?
Oh, yes, absolutely, yes.
Alderman Atkins?
I agree.
I agree as well.
Oh, thank you, Alderman Kibelski.
I agree.
Chevler?
I agree.
Cynthia, is that what you need?
Yep.
Megan, does that work? Does that get?
That, that gets, yep, that gets us to the next step, thank you.
Thank you. Megan, what's the timeline on that?
Um, I said, I think what they were saying, what, what were they looking at, um, fourth quarter?
Yeah, they like to try to get something done yet this calendar year at all possible, so, I mean, we're here in the first of September, you probably can count on um, sixty to a hundred and twenty days to get something like that done, where you take the bonds to market and get closed. Um, but, you know, based on what we've hearing, what we want to do is, um, make sure we can document the, the savings over what's in the redevelopment agreement versus what, uh, they expect in the capital markets, uh, how much shorter that puts the TIF in before it, uh, is, is collapsed by accomplishing all the reimbursement. So you guys feel comfortable that that's an appropriate decision.
Do we have to go out for bond rating on that as, again?
No.
Okay.
It, for a, a TIF deal, it's unlikely that you would get a, a bond rating unless you had significant history. Um, we, we do have some history and it allows, uh, the underwriters being, uh, proposing the alternative to to, to market the bonds, uh, to, to investors that are looking for higher yields on investments besides, uh, general obligation bonds, which are, you know, bearing interest in one percent or low, you know, one percent to two percent, something like that. Um, but, uh, and it wouldn't, wouldn't be a bond rating or anything else that would be looking at or evaluating the credit of the city itself.
Cool. All right, I think we're good on that. Ms. Wagner, do you have anything? Sorry, Ms. Wagner, do you have anything else you need from the board?
I don't believe so, Megan or? I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead, Megan or Anna, you got anything else?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
EDC, do you have any more comments for the board or staff prior to, uh, you guys adjourning?
I don't know, I, I just kind of echo what I said earlier with, I just don't think we would want to say one way or another, yes or no to one thing across the board, I think we should ent, entertain all of the proposals that come to us and evaluate each one individually and see where we go.
I agree with Alicia.
Okay. Alicia, can you, uh, go ahead and, uh, make the motion to adjourn your guys' meeting?
Motion to adjourn EDC meeting? Any one second?
All in favor of adjourning the EDC, say aye.
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 Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Aldermen work session.
I second.
Alderman Sarver?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Kelly, did you have the second?
Now I second, yeah, sorry.
All in favor of adjourning the Board of Aldermen work session, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Um, we are on the same Zoom, so we will go ahead and let you guys grab a quick bio break and we will start again in twelve minutes.